Rock in Richmond Ward. I'm going to hand over to Sarah, who's going to ring, who's going to talk about the housekeeping arrangements. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile-
Do you want to say a little bit of an apology tonight? Hey? Stop.
Sorry. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? There are no fire test plans for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is by the telephone pole on the path to Ravens Cross Road. Hopefully, everyone knows where that is. The toilets are situated near the entrance as you come in. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available, so if you would like one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just do apologies first. And, Hudda, any apologies?
Yeah, we've had apologies from councillors here in ours, councillor Sophie Wilson. I think that's about it.
Mazerick, well, as well, is that apologies?
Oh, yeah, councillor Mazerick, well.
Okay, and so we'll start with some introductions of the local councillors and officers. If we start at David Barton, the local Richmond councillor.
Finally get to work in my performance. How difficult is it? I'm David Barton, one of the councillors for Richmond Ward.
Hello, my name is councillor Mike Dubble, and I'm also one of the councillors for beautiful Richmond Ward.
And councillor Seanid Meyer Richards, who's councillor for the even more beautiful Manor Ward.
It's a competition now for beautiful ward. Councillor Nabil Alana for Park and Abaton.
I'm Mary Lee, I'm chair of the LAC and also councillor for Donald Ward.
Thank you, councillor Teddy Fox of Manor Castle Ward.
Councillor Ben Miskel for Park and Abaton Ward.
I'm Hudda Ahmed, I'm the local area committee manager for the East Lac.
Sarah Hyde, Democratic Services.
Any need for exclusion of the press and public in the, on the agenda today? No? Any declarations of interest from councillors? No? Can we approve the minutes of the previous meeting, which were on the 11th of July 23? Yeah?
Agreed.
Agreed. Any matters arising from anybody on the committee? No? So we start then the presentations, and just for us to introduce ourselves.
Hi, everybody. My name is Diane Hurst, I'm a Richmond Ward councillor. Sorry about earlier, I was just dealing with somebody that was asking to speak to the hearer in the lobby.
Okay, thanks. So the only agenda today, we've got a presentation from Diane Buckley, who's here, one of the council officers, who's going to talk about city goals. And by city goals, we mean what is the city going to be like in the next 20 years, in 2035, 2040? What would we like our city to look like? So it's a big vision of, an ambition of what we here would like for our children and for our, for ourselves, some of us, when we get older, for some of us. And so that's, that's what Diane's going to session, we'll do a presentation, and we're going to go into workshops and add to the consultations that's been happening over the city over the last few months. We've got also then these local area committee spend report, because that's about the funding, the slack, what money we've got, what we intend to spend over the next few months, and how some of that money will be spent, and then public questions and petitions. And that's it. So I'm going to wind over to Diane, who's going to do the first presentation. And it'll just be about 10 minutes?
Yes. Brilliant. Thank you for having me. Nice to see you all. I really enjoy coming to LAC and meeting with community directly and hearing your feedback. So I really appreciate the opportunity today. I can. Thank you. Just holding this as well at the same time. So, hi, everybody. I'm Diana, I'm the director of Economy Skills and Culture in the City Futures Department at Sheffield City Council. So I'm just going to talk to you about a project that the council's involved in, not necessarily leading, it's being led by the Sheffield City Partnership, which is where the voluntary sector, the anchor institutions like universities and hospitals, the police, all come together to look at the future and the priorities for the city. So the Sheffield City Goals are, as Mary Lee was saying, are around what is the future of Sheffield going to be like for our children, essentially? What do we want the city to be like in 2035, for example? And therefore, what are the things that we need to work on collectively? Residents, communities, businesses, voluntary sector, the council? How do we all pull together and what do we want to prioritise and achieve? So that's really what we're trying to do in the city goals. And the reason we want to do that is we think it'd be really powerful if the city all spoke with one voice around what we want the future to look like. It'll help us prioritise, help us collaborate and work together on things, and empower people to kind of get involved as well. We also think it'll be really helpful when we're bidding for finance from government, from investors, and from other funders, if we can all kind of come together as partners and communities to say, this is what we want for Sheffield. Often, when we talk to government, I kind of say, what's Sheffield's vision? And often, we say different things at the moment, and that often doesn't mean we get through the system as quickly as we could. So we've been working on this for a while now. It started at Sheffield City Partnership back in November 21. The first thing they asked us to do was to do some economic analysis, so to look at, you know, the data behind the city. And on the desk here, I've got packs of cards, which have got loads of stats on. I am a bit of a stat geek, so if you want to have a look through them and see some of the data behind this, like unemployment rates, different sectors in the city, inequality figures, we've got all of that data kind of standing behind some of this project, so very happy to share it with you all. We then, after that, decided that the first thing we wanted to do was to listen to the citizens of Sheffield. Sometimes, in cases like this, partnerships and the council even, we'd write this and then consult, and we're doing this in a totally different way. So we're listening first. So we've spent a number of months doing a lot of engagement, and today I want to test with you some of what people have said to us, to see if it rings true for you and your communities. So, I'll skip on. So I'll just talk to you a little bit about the engagement that we've done. So first of all, we did an online survey that went out to all Sheffield residents. We got about 16,000 responses to that. And then, in addition to that, we've done loads of workshops all across the city, with youth cabinet, with youth clubs, with the voluntary sector in communities, with businesses. So we've done about 28 in total, all of which were attended by loads of different people. So we've got a good kind of set of feedback. And then we've also worked with Voluntary Action Sheffield, I don't know if you know they, but then, but they have a big community network, they support the voluntary sector. And they've done something called collaborative conversations. So they've been meeting with, they've got a set of ambassadors for this work, it's about 50 people, and all those 50 people have been having conversations in their area and feeding the information back to us. So on the back of all that information, and again, I've got another pack here that's got all quotes from the community, the results of the survey, so if you want to see any of that, very happy to share all of that. We've got this huge amount of data, and then it was, what do we do with it? So again, at that point, we could have got hold of the pen and written it ourselves, and we didn't. Through the summer, we had workshops, we got about 70 different people involved from all different organisations, and they helped co-draft these goals. So what you've got on your tables at the moment is a product of those, that evidence-based work that we've done and those co-drafting workshops, and this is what's come out that we want to test with you today. I'll just talk to you about a bit what happens after today. So you're part of what we're calling a feedback loop, so we're testing these goals in the community in different areas. And then we're going to do a big public consultation in November. Then, after that, we'll finalise the goals, and these will be launched early next year with the partnership and the city for everybody to get behind. If you want to get involved, obviously, you're here today and we're going to have a workshop, but there's going to be another survey, a public conversation, where you'll get to vote on these goals and also add in different ones if you'd like to. So I just want to talk to you about, a little bit about what the goals are. We've got five goals in the middle. These are to represent the stories of Sheffield that people have been talking to us about, the stories we want to be able to tell in 2035. I'll read some of the titles out here, but: A Sheffield of thriving communities; a Sheffield for future generations; a regenerative Sheffield. So far, people don't know what that means, so we'll see what you think of it. A city of makers, doers and inventors; and a compassionate and connected Sheffield. So they're the stories that we're hearing, that people want to tell about the city in the future. So I want to test them with you today, there's some detail below that. Underneath each of those, there's a number of statements, things that we need to do, ways that we need to act, outcomes we need to deliver. So on your table, you'll see, each of those five headings have got a sheet on your table and then the four statements underneath. So all of this information is on your table. And what I'd like you to do in the workshop is have a conversation first off. What do you think about what I've said? Is it even a good idea? What's your view? What would it mean for you to have some city goals in Sheffield? How would it make a difference to you? What do you want to see in the draft goals? And how do you want your communities and the people that you love and know in the city to have their say? What can you do to help them, others get involved? Then, we're going to come round and help facilitate this, but the job I'd want you to do is, I've given everybody some stickers. So you've got red, amber and green, traffic lights essentially. So I want you to read the goals that are on the table. If you like it, green dot it, bank it. If you think, well, the sentiment's right, I get what it's saying, but the words are rubbish, put an amber dot on there, get a post-it note and rewrite it for us. Tell us what words you would use. And if you really don't like it, red dot it, cross it out, but give us an alternative. What would you say? What would you like to see in the goals? So it's a real opportunity, an open opportunity for you to shape these, we really want your feedback. I'll stop there. Before I do, can I just check, everybody understands what we'd like you to do in the workshop? Yes?
Great. Okay, well, we've got one, two, three, four tables. I don't know if you're going to be attended by yourself, or do you want to join? Yeah? Okay. Mary, I think we're-
So just remember, if you want to go and sit on some of those tables and help facilitate the sessions, please. And we'll come back, if we spend till seven o'clock, is that all right, Derek? Seven o'clock, we'll come back. So please sit in around the tables and help facilitate. Okay? Thank you.
Probably send it to the other speaker. Yeah, there we go. Thanks, everybody, for all your insights and your time in looking at this with us tonight. I just wanted to give you a bit of a flavour of what I've heard and then tell you what will happen next. So some of the things that I've heard from the tables tonight is, you want to see some things that are a bit more specific in there, so things that are important to you, like safety, jobs, transport, so you want to see those things written in there. I've also kind of heard that this is probably a bit too, like pie in the sky was the quote that I got, and that, you know, let's be realistic about what we can achieve in 12 years, but not lose the ambition at the same time. That's a really tough job, so thank you for all your post-it notes that are going to help us guide us how we get there. Some missing areas around wellbeing, I think that was a really good point, that's not in there as much, and wanting to understand when we get to the specifics. So I think I just wanted to say that after we've got these high-level goals, there'll be a set of indicators that kind of you can measure against the progress, and action plans against these as well. So for example, when we were talking about young people, one of the key things that came out was youth centres and youth provision and making sure that there's things that people can do. So that might come in the next set down. So this is the second version of the goals, and it was good to hear that somebody's been involved in the first set and they look totally different now. So I expect these to look totally different again by the time they go out to the public consultation, because we are genuinely redrafting them based on the sessions that we're doing. So thank you very much. I hope that when the public consultation comes out, you'll feel like you can share it in your network and that you feel like you've been listened to. We won't get it 100% right, we won't be able to get everything that you've said in, but hopefully you'll see that change of direction and the value in this process. So thanks very much, everybody, for your time.
Thanks, Diane. Just before you go, has anybody got any final questions for Diane, anything? Or any burning point they've not put down on paper? No? Thank you. Thanks, thanks a lot. To come back here or do you stay where you are? Councillors? So I'm going to ask Hudda, she's going to talk, give us an update on the LAC funding and where we are, and how much money we've got in the bank, whether we can spend it.
So my finance report was sent out with the agenda and the papers, and it was sent to all the elected members. So I'm hoping that you've read it in advance, because I'm going to be brief. If I point you in your packs, it should be in page 17. So it started on page 17, but I just want to draw your attention to page where we talk about the funding, which is on page, starts on page 20. And if you remember, we, when we had conversations in and out with the East Lac members, we did recommend that the £100,000 that was, that's been allocated to the East Lac, that that's divided between each ward, so the address, £25,000, each ward would receive £25,000. And, and that we, we needed to make sure that £25,000 is spent on the East Lac priorities. As you can see on page 21, the six priorities that have been identified through consultations that we did two years ago, recently, earlier this year. Our priorities are children, your people, the environment, antisocial behaviour and crime, communities, the neighbourhoods, health and wellbeing and highways and transport. So that's, that's what we, we had conversations about, and we want to make sure that that's in agreement with all our elected members. And the other bit that I want to draw your attention to is the cost of living fund. So ever East Lac, we've been allocated an amount of £77,100. It has been recommended that 50% of that fund, which means £38,550, is awarded to the Citizen Advice Sheffield, and that is to support its citywide free-fund advice line. And that it's recommended that the remaining £38,550 is used to create an East Cost of Living Fund. And so the fund for the East, for the cost of living could be issues, we could use that fund for issues like, you know, food and practical items, like today, we, you know, we put some food on for our public meetings, but, you know, things like breakfast club that we could, we could introduce, and also we need to support some of our welcome spaces that are dotted around the East Lac. So my, so the recommendation, which is on page 23, is really to agree the proposal. That's all. Thank you.
We're just funded year by year for the moment. We don't know for next year. Maybe we, we have discussed whether we should have some settlement, whatever that will be, and we'll know that we get to year on year. Obviously, that changes as time goes on, but we don't know yet. But, what we're saying is, we're going to, we've got £100,000 for LAC, we're going to divide that £25,000 for each ward, and we've got nearly £80,000 of cost of living money, £38,000, half of that, £38,000 will go to fund an extra, some extra CAB capacity, and the rest will be spent within the ward. Okay, so that's what the committee have been asking us to read those recommendations, so can we agree them?
Agree.
Thank you. That's great. Is that it? Is there anything else? Okay. Thanks, everybody. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public questions. We did have notification of at least one public question. I don't know if the person, is if anybody's here to ask that question?
Is that one from Diane?
No. I've not seen any from Diane.
Diane, yes.
Who?
I thought there was a question coming about Manor Ward.
Yes, there was one coming from Manor Castle Development Trust, but I don't know if there's anybody here to ask the question. And that just concerned a piece of land on, on the corner of Manor Lane and Sky Edge Avenue, and whether that was in council, that was council land, and could it be used therefore for some work that the trust, the Health Service and Manor Castle Development Trust and other people would like to develop it as a social amenity for local people. What we, the answer would have been, please come and discuss that with your relevant officers and local councillors. Is that right? Shall I? Do you want to add anything to that?
No.
Okay, that's great. So anybody else, any public questions here in the room? Yep. Lady at the back.
I'm the chair of Friends of Richmond Park.
Can I ask you to stand up? That's all right.
I can, but I've got a backpack.
Oh, okay. No, never mind then, just-
If I stand up, I might fall over by the time I've finished.
Well, you carry on as you are.
Thank you. Yeah, basically, my question is about the park house in Richmond Park. I brought up this question several times to the LAC. I can remember back in February 2022, when councillor Fox said he would try and find out what was happening. I've been in contact with Diane Hurst and the other two ward councillors for this ward. Councillor Hurst kindly wrote to Kate Josephs about this house. Basically, the house has been stood empty for three years now. The previous tenants left in November 2020, and the house was just left. By September that year, the downstairs windows had been smashed. Three weeks later, the upstairs windows were smashed. The council came and boarded those up, but the front door wasn't boarded up. Then the door was smashed and the panels were taken out. And since then, there's been a continuous amount of antisocial behaviour, not just around the house, but the park in general. What is more worrying than anything is that this antisocial behaviour are children between nine and 12 years old. And on Friday, we had the second fire in the house, and the fire brigade were there for over two hours. This is an empty house, it's a three-bedroom house, standing empty when there is a housing problem in this city. And the legal people at the council are saying they can't do anything. And I'm sorry, but at the end of the day, we've got children coming straight out of outward school, after school, and hanging around the house, sitting on the outer house, sitting on the old toilet block, climbing onto the pavilion, destroying trees, lighting fires, throwing stones, insulting members of the public, swearing words I don't want to use at this meeting. And this has been going on for three years now. By looking at the records I've got for last year, I had 16 pages of incidents. I'm sorry, but it's totally ridiculous, because if anybody gets into that house today, now it's gone dark and sets fire to it, that house will go up in flames. And I'm sorry, but something needs doing now. Thank you for listening.
Okay, I'm, well, it's, I'm really sorry that this has happened. The house, I did make some inquiries, because I thought this might be a question that might have come, and I was told that there was extensive repairs needed to the house. These, it was understood that because Richmond Park is a charitable park, we couldn't put a tenant in there or sell the house to anybody as a, as a residence. That doesn't mean to say it couldn't have been used for other purposes at all. However, as you, as you know, we are where we are, and the cost, again, will be even more now to put that house back into any, back into any kind of shape at all. I'm going to pass over to Diane Hurst, who, your local councillor, is, I know you've been working with, and I don't know if you've got any updates on that, Diane, from your perspective?
Thank you, Irene, and thank you for your continued reporting and your patience throughout all of this, and to any of the people who live near to the park, who may be watching or watching this back, for putting up with all the antisocial behaviour and uses, they're not just stones, the trees, the apple trees will be fruiting in the garden now and in the orchard, and they'll be going through people's windows. I did report it to the police, to the new neighbourhood inspector, when you told me that the fire brigade were in attendance last Friday. And I know she's been sending people out to patrol regularly, and I believe that the house is now being tinned up, has had metal frames. Has it not? I was told that that was going to be done over the weekend. Okay, let me chase that up, Irene, and I'm going to try and get, I took the executive director of that, director around there in the summer, and showed her the house in context of the park. Because, yes, we can't sell it, it's actually in the curage of the park, but that's not to say that we couldn't have let it as a concessionary let to, we used to let parks houses as concessionary let to people that were employees of the Parks and Countryside Service. And it was fully understood that it was a tied tenancy, and that when your employment came to an end, you would have a period of time, I can see lots of knobs around the room, so it's not me that's ramped it, that you would be found another house elsewhere that was suitable to your needs. So I should still press for that. The cost of repairs now, I've been told, has gone up to around £75,000. So that's £75,000 of work, if we'd have got our act together in the first place, we needn't have to do. Can I suggest that we get our heads together and perhaps involve somebody that can make a difference, either from facilities and property management or from the corporate working group, and we actually sit down and try and get some answers together? Is that okay?
Okay, so I'll ask Hudda if she could then contact her relevant officers, I think in parks and in property services, and whoever else you think might be useful to have on a meeting and discussion with. And also ensure that the police are aware of all that antisocial behaviour, and maybe, maybe report to David Pass as well, who's our safer neighbourhood officer, who can ensure that we do maybe patrol that area more frequently, certainly with our safer neighbourhood team, we will do that. It feels a little bit like we're doing this when the horse has bolted, but we will, you know, we'll ensure that that work gets done now. I think, I have to say that the maintenance and costs for all our community buildings around the city is tremendous. We've had so many years of austerity, our, you know, finances have dwindled, we've lost about £450,000, was it £450 billion over the last 10 years from our budget, our discretionary budgets. So we're reaping some of these rewards now. That's not to excuse the vandalism that has gone on, absolutely not. But, you know, things are difficult in the council. But we will take it up now and see what can be done. But I am not sure at this stage that that will have a big solution, but we'll certainly try our best to find some solution for the property and for the park. Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, maybe then. Yeah, maybe then.
Hi, my name's Vicky. I am the resident engagement at Archer's Housing. I've been asked by a customer in Darnell with regards to Balfour Drive. There seems to be a lot of traffic coming onto there, and it's a cold site. People are turning on, not realising, so we've got trucks, lorries, cars, turning on and then having to turn around and things like that. So it's causing a lot of chaos. So I just wondered if we've got any, if the highways could possibly fly at the end of the road on Sanicus Road to actually let people know. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks for letting us know about that one. We'll see, absolutely, again, we'll, we'll get in touch with the relevant officers and see what we can do about that. Thank you. And I've got a question for you, but I'll ask you after the meeting. Okay.
I'm Naomi. I'm a local resident of Stradbroke. I've been working with Diane. Basically, we've been working with the roofs. As you know, as you've noticed in the daylight, it's different coloured roofs. And this morning, a lady wrote saying, there's not a point for no-one to do roofing programmes for this area at all. They put a bid out today, and we're going to hopefully start next year, which I don't think is good enough. Because even if I went into the administration at sixty million pounds, and basically, I don't think it's good enough. I've been a tenant for thirteen years because I've been in different flats. And I think they need to get off the rocks, basically. You know, if you've seen my flat, I'm living with my mum and holy halls, it's really. But that's also a downside to previous tenants who've let us. But also, it's a downside to council. And it's not just me. There's other tenants. I mean, John's a tenant. He's got an house for you, you know. We're all thinking, but it's just I feel it's unfair that everyone's got a new roof, and what about mine? Mine didn't stay, you know?
Okay, thank you very much. We will take your name and address before you go tonight. And obviously, gentlemen next to you will take that, so we absolutely know which flats you're talking about. Diane knows a little bit about this. We will find out exactly where you are. We are with, with any new contracts that are being.
So us all saying, oh, we're going to do your roofing autumn. But when a woman turns around today from council saying, we're not going to do it, it's going to be next year, why send bloody letters out saying it's autumn this year? What's wrong? It's worth the free.
Sure, okay. As I said, we'll, we'll certainly go to our housing services and find out where we are with this one. And I think what we'll do is arrange a meeting with, we'll ensure that they arrange a meeting with tenants in this area, the ones that are affected. But I'm going to bring Diane in, who may want to add to that one.
Thank you, Naomi. Thank you for coming today. And thank you for being brave when it's obviously affecting your wellbeing, living with a, I don't know, leaking the bathroom ceiling that pours water through when it rains. Just to, just for people that haven't lived with this, as Naomi has for a couple of years, when the council's roofing contractors went bankrupt last year, Naomi's was one of the houses that was on the list urgently to be done, as have several other of my constituents. And we've been talking to officers ever since then about getting the roofs done, temporary repairs, and getting the contract awarded so that the roof can be mended properly and proper insulation put in. That hasn't happened yet. That, that contract hasn't been awarded yet. And it will be yet another winter for a lot of tenants to live with cold and wet and damp. And now we've got to know as a matter of public record, we'll come back here with our answer next month, but we'll also write to you. And in the meantime, we can sit down and talk about where we're going to take this, what other pressure we can put, we can bring to bear. It won't make the contract be awarded any earlier, and I still haven't had that information. Someone's run you today to say that the contract's being put out to offer today. I'm still waiting for that response. But I will pick it up, and we will work together to try and get something for the tenants of Richmond for my part, but for all the tenants of Sheffield as a matter of urgency. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Diane. So Diane will do what she said. I know she will. And we, in the meantime, will, through our, through our LAC manager, I'll just finish. The LAC manager will contact housing services and find out where we are exactly with this, with this situation that you find yourself in at the moment. And if there's any specific repairs that you need to your property at the moment, that, then if it's not been reported, we will take them down today and make sure that they are reported, and we'll do that.
Like I was saying to Diane, you've worn a bush roof, and housing associations have had their roof done. And I said to Diane, I might as well still live it saying that, but go from Sheffield Council to an housing association where I might actually get a roof. Because I'm at that point, if I do that, move that, they put me up in an hotel, or it's mutual exchange, where that other person will have to deal with it. So what am I meant to do? I know it's a waiting game, but it's second to first.
I think it is, it sounds a bit, there is a bit of a waiting game now before the, a new contractor's employed. But any, any work you do, that needs to be, that needs to be done in the meantime, you know, until that is, work is contracted and the work starts, then we'll, we'll certainly take those details tonight and make sure it gets passed on to housing repairs. You know, I know that each year, a certain number of roofs are done, and there'll be a schedule for those, and someone has to be first or someone will have to be last. And, you know, you, those that are first are very fortunate. But we will certainly get as many details and get you up to date as soon as we possibly can. Thank you. Thank you for bringing your question.
Going back, going back to Richmond Park. I, I've, I've found they've built another park. It's not more roundabouts than that in there. Is it necessary to do that? Is that, is there that wasting money? That it should be spent on something else? To me, it's wasting money. The old park was okay.
Right, I missed what you said at the beginning of your question.
Oh. Richmond Park. I noticed they've built another, some more swings and roundabouts and what have you.
Not Richmond Park. So that's what they're proposing in new parks.
Yeah, and I don't think it's necessary. They need to spend that money on the houses. My house I live in has not, I've been in it for sixty-four years. And all the time I've been in that house, since my mum and my dad, that's never been, that house has never been pointed.
Well, the money for Richmond Park is just, is just money that is set out for Richmond Park. It's not housing money, and I think some of that will be, will have been raised by.
I don't believe.
Well, okay. We, I find out, I mean, I don't, Diane might be able to answer this question, or one of the other Richmond councillors who are sat over there. I'm not, I'm going to bring them in because Diane is too close to me at the minute. So I'm going to ask Mike or David if they know where that money came from. It will not have come from the housing services. I'll guarantee that.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for your question. Speaking as one of the other two Richmond councillors, thanks for the hearing. I can say that obviously, I fully sympathise with what you're saying about the state of some of the housing. And one of the things we have been doing is trying to work, is any way that we can look at some of the properties that are in the state of disrepair that you have described, and see if we can do anything about that, because I think it's fair to say in our world, we have many longstanding residents who have been in the world for many, many years, have contributed to the community. And we think it's only right that you should live in a property that is fitting for you. Although just on the point of the park, and they're picking up on Mary's point about the money coming from different parts. Look, I understand what you're saying about your frustrations about money not being spent on your houses. But, you know, it's great that we've got some new playgrounds, swings and roundabouts in that park. We want to do more and build a better park, what we as councillors, I'm sure I can speak for all the councillors in the East Lake. We want to make our part of the city just as good in terms of resources, in terms of all the amenities, as those parks in the west of the city, like Millhouses and Encliff Park and all those, that seem to get all the funds. So what we want to do is build up what's in our parks, but I think we also can't leave you behind as well. Does answer your question. Thank you.
To get more money, I did thought about going, to the lottery, to give you some money, to give you more money to do the jobs.
We can certainly go to the lottery, all the friends groups can go to lottery, to the lottery for match funding. You know, if we have so, if we have so much money to spend on a park, we could ask the lottery and send them our plans and ask them for more money. That's, that's what friends groups do all over the city. And I'm sure your friends groups do that as well, and I see your hand going up, so they're going to talk about that one. We can't use that money for housing, though. That's, that's something that is not, we can't do.
Now, I'm sure you're not the type of dull person that watches some of the party conferences that have been going on recently. But what I will say is, I don't know if any of you saw some of the speeches that have been going on at the Labour Party Conference. And one of the big things the Labour Party is going to be doing now is having a massive programme of house building and of house renovation. So what I will say is, I'll take what you've said, and I will forward it to some of the higher-ups in our party and say, this is an example of the type of things that we need. You know, we need the revitalisation of our housing stock because there are people who pay rents, ratepayers, who've paid rents and contributed to this city for decades, and they should live in decent housing. So what I would say is, watch this space, and hopefully, if we get a Labour government within the next year or so, then I think we'll start to see some real movement.
Bring the lady from Richmond Park in, the friends group in next, if you don't mind.
Yes, I just want to clarify what happens in the parks departments. Most, a lot of the parks across Sheffield have got friends groups. And it's the friends groups that fund quite a lot of things that happen in the park. What's happened in Hollins End Park, where the playground's been, been put in, Hollins End Friends Group applied for funding from Viola to have their work done. It's taken about two years to get to that. The Friends Group of Richmond Park have been in existence for quite a long time. And we raise, we have raised funds over the years for lots of the equipment that is in the park. All the benches, picnic tables, the small climbing frame, the benches within the pavilion have all been provided by funding raised from the Friends Group. It's not part of council funding at all. If we didn't raise the money, those items wouldn't be there. We're fortunate enough to get sponsorship from the local co-op, and we were successfully having a lottery fund as well. The little climbing frame on the children's playground that is for toddlers costs seven and a half thousand pounds. And we raised that money. And that's why different parks have different things, because of their ability to raise money. And I suspect that the Friends of Millhouses Park put a lot more money into their community than what we're able to in our areas. I hope that helps people understand what the difference is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we have many, many friends groups across the city, and they all do a fantastic job. We've got others here tonight. We've got Friends of Hazel's Park here, and they have raised significant amounts over the years. And, and put a lot of effort into maintaining and enhancing the, that park as well, as no doubt you're doing, Richmond Park. Is there any more questions? One more? Yeah?
Going back to what Mr. Trouble said. Yeah, about housing. It's all right saying about Keir Starmer, but you need to actually, someone needs to come out and have a look at situations. You know, like I said to Diane, everything is just a rotting nightmare, basically.
Okay, well, we have got our housing, the Labour Party, the Labour Group's housing spokesperson here, this is Nabilah Malama. Malama, who is our, who is our spokesperson on the Housing Committee. She will go out, she just offered to go out and see what the situation is for you. And I'm sure she will be liaising with the right officers and ensure they get there as well and understand what's happening. And you talked about, not just your roof, but also about some mould in your house and a possible leak and maybe other repairs.
Five leaks.
Okay, well, I'm not going to take a list of things.
I'm not going to tell you all the leaks.
That's fine. So the councillor, Malama, will, will go out and visit, and we'll certainly ensure, and we get a complete list of all the things that you need doing, and have a discussion about, you know, what you'd like to see in the properties going forward in the future. And I'm sure if you were to bring a few friends who live with you around your area, she would be happy to speak to them as well. Okay. And, yeah, and when Mike was talking about Keir Starmer and what the Labour Party plans to do, these are long-term plans. But that, this is our absolute intention, and that's not just about building new homes, which is significant in itself. It's also about making sure our stock is, is up to date and fit to live in as well. Okay, all right then. So I'm not going to take.
No, but what I'm saying is, sorry. So what I'm saying is, it's not about the new homes you're building, neighbour building. You need to be focusing, you need to be focusing on homes and flats now.
Exactly, and that's what we've just, exactly, that's, you're absolutely right. And we're going to come out and have a look and see what you need in your particular area and the flats that you live in and what your neighbours feel they need as well. We can't promise anything will be done absolutely the next day, but we'll certainly have a look at how to prioritise that. Okay, thank you. Many more hands going up, so I'm going to assume that's it. And so thank you, thank you, everybody for coming. I think we've had a good meeting. I hope you've enjoyed the workshop. And we'll certainly want to get some feedback back when the work that they're doing, the work that Diane is doing is completed. I'm sure you'll come back, or somebody will come back and tell us what's happening. Okay, so thanks, everybody. Thank you.